Good evening, everyone. This is Robert Stevenson. It is six oh two on the ninth of January. I'm going to call to order the Southwood Collin Grandville Regional School District School Committee meeting for this evening. Can I get a motion entered into the meeting? It's a whole bunch of people. I get a second.
Second.
All right, since we have a couple of our school committee members remote tonight, we're gonna do roll call votes for everything. So we're gonna enter into the meeting. Pam, can I get a vote for you?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero. Um, let's see, can I get everyone to to stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ted, I could hear you standing. Good job up there. All right. Yeah, I know, I know. Uh, okay, opening ceremony. Okay, so we have our consent agenda tonight. We've got some fundraisers, we've got another state field trip. This is the speaking hour for our whole peace moment. Anybody got any issues, concerns, items that we need to pull out of that? All right, warrants, we've got some warrants going around here. As long as we've got four, we're good, which I think we are. Right? Isn't that Aaron? You just need four? Four signatures? Good. Correspondent, Superintendent Willer, give me correspondence.
She doesn't have any correspondence.
Look at that. I'm telling Pam, keep track. We started at six oh two. We're going for the record.
Sure. Say nothing.
All right, bubble comment. We have absolutely nobody here except for us. Um, so. Agnolia, short and sweet, no joke. It's up to you. You're up.
Okay, so this past Sunday, because of the snowstorm, um, NHS students of Harvard senior something seniors went out to help local seniors shut a walkway, stairs and anything else and make it clear. Um, it was pretty okay, but we're working on a few things. Um, this past Tuesday, the second, student council provided breakfast for teachers on their professional development day. Rehearsals for our upcoming musical, The Lord of the Ruin, will be done as of this Monday and performances will be held April fourth to the sixth. That's where this one went. Actually, no, we didn't. Never mind. Um, I ready for grade seven to nine are this Wednesday, which is math, and then Thursday's English. Finals for semester one are next Wednesday and Thursday with the accompanying accompanying AP Lit, AP Lit moth exam midterm slash final. Um, on next Thursday, the eighteenth, the freshman class is hosting a game night as a fundraiser and class bonding event. And then on although it's Thursday the eighteenth, on Friday, the nineteenth, the seventh and eighth grades are hosting a winter summer formalists. And that's it.
Fantastic. Look at that. Good job. All right. On to educational presentation. I'm assuming our first one is gonna get pushed because Mr. Carmel is sick.
I have it here.
Oh, great. See, I'm cutting into my time. This is not good.
Sorry, this is too easy. This is just, um, we're bringing forth, we got a fourteen thousand dollar grant. And it was a competitive grant for the deeper learning implementation. Of what that means is we get seven thousand for teacher stipends for professional learning outside of their school day. And we get seven thousand dollars for supplies and materials. Uh, Desi does a kaleidoscope, uh, which is best educational practices. And they are going to be, our district will be partnering with Desi's kaleidoscope team to work on building deeper learning, um, implementing tools and routines, um, user and professional development for instruction to align to deeper learning and to foster effective pedagogy, which just means better teaching, um, more effective teaching. Really working on developing the students' mastery, identity and creativity on Bloom's higher order thinking, not just at memorization and applying, but really being able to take information and doing stuff with it and applying it in different places. Um, celebrating with leaders, uh, supporting leaders and teachers and, uh, supporting leaders and strengthening coherence across all the instructional systems in support of deeper learning. Um, they're really going to be focusing on the fourteen practices um, that are part of the building thinking classrooms and mathematics, grade K through twelve, teaching practices that enhance learning the book. Um, they're already familiar with the book, um, and they're just going to, um, take the work a little bit deeper. So it's teaching students, all students to become critical thinkers, effective problem solvers, clear communicators, incompetent mathematicians, and the district's strategic objective of engage. Fully accepting that fourteen thousand dollar grant tonight if you approve.
So Jen, is this for PD that, um, has already been established, um, for new PD? Um, or is this kind of just a, um, a bucket of money that when we have, um, PD, this money can be used to apply due to pay for it?
No, this is designed for upcoming professional development because we haven't accepted the grant yet. We haven't spent any money yet, but it's a continuation of work that we're currently doing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. All right, um, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar.
Okay, this is an interesting calendar, and I just want to point out a few changes that are a little bit different. Um, this is a weird one because of how Christmas and New Year's Eve falls on the calendar. Uh, so what we met with our admin team and our teachers really like having to come back to school and having a day of PD before the kids come back because it's mid-year. Kind of like a nice check-in point about the district initiatives. So what we've opted to do is we, if you look at the calendar, we're gonna have staff opening day on the twenty-sixth, a staff PD day on the twenty-seventh, and in doing, instead of adding our second PD day at the beginning of the year, we're gonna have the students come on the twenty-eighth. And instead of having a collab day in the month of September, we're gonna do a collab day on the thirtieth, uh, which is would be a half day for students and the teachers would stay. And we could incorporate a little bit more of our PD since we're only having, um, the one day of PD. What we are doing for our two days of PD, if you look down in January, uh, where the January second and third are going to be PD days for teachers because we usually do one day at the end, but it doesn't make sense to do one day and then bring the kids back for one day. So police interruption to student learning is to do two PD days that week. So the students will have two full weeks off from school. I'm glad, I bet no one will be complaining. And then they'll start early.
Especially not the seniors.
Yeah.
The seniors, yeah. Love it.
And so we swapped the day at the beginning of the year for a day in, um, January eighth.
And Easter helps some out too, because you get an extra long weekend for April vacation.
Oh, sometimes that happens. Yeah, that's not uncommon.
No, no, I know. I mean, they get a week, they get a day. Wow.
So we were kind of creative to keep it, um, as least disruptive as possible for student learning.
But we're going till the twenty-third of June.
Uh, nineteen?
No, that's with five snow days.
Thirteen.
Oh, that's with five snow days. Okay, twentieth, okay.
Five snow days.
Thirteen would be our last day.
I always kind of stick that in there.
The thirteenth is good.
Yeah, thirteen. Then you do have
So we only have two snow days. We go, we go to the seventeenth because that'll never work. All right, and how many, have we had any snow days yet?
No.
No.
So we're at zero.
Yeah. My face will be coming up soon.
Seniors will start to go. Come on.
Not negative now.
All right.
Now might be a good time to mention that the roads in Grandville right now are treacherous.
Yes, I know. And I guess they're not much better around here.
Oh, I lost you.
Nope, can you hear it?
Oh, now I can, yeah.
Okay.
She may all be.
Obviously, the phone lines are not working that much better up there in Grandville either.
Well, um, the, the drive home was absolutely awful. One of the most I had.
Sure it'll be. Sure it'll be better tomorrow. If not, then we'll have a delayed opening or something. This is what, this is what it's great when the superintendent gets to wake up at four in the morning to try to figure all this fun stuff, right?
I already have it on. I talked to you. My concern tomorrow is more power.
Oh.
Not icy. It's gonna be fifty degrees tonight. I'm concerned about flooding and power. Yeah. That's what we're concerned about for tomorrow. So we already have a call.
Did get that message from Eversource. It's like, you know, we're watching.
Hang in there.
Yeah.
You got, you, you got, still got power up there, Ted?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
No problem.
No wind yet.
All right, good. All right, here we go. Okay, on to policy, which we've got none right now. Uh, okay, action item, Superintendent Willer.
Move to approve consent agenda items as listed above recommended.
So.
Second.
All right, so we're gonna do roll call votes tonight. So Pam?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Erica?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
Rob's a yes, motion passes. Ted, Ted, sorry.
Yeah.
Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to accept the deeper learning implementation grant and approve expenditures as outlined in the terms of the grant recommended.
So.
Second.
Anybody got any questions on that? All right, we'll do a vote to approve. Pam?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Yours and mine are closed. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the STGRSD calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year recommended.
So.
Second.
Pam, Ron.
Pam, Pam, she, she, we got, we got extra stuff here. Um, all right, any questions on that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero. All right, that's it. Uh, Superintendent Willer? Update on goals?
Yeah, so I, just to do a quick mid-year update on my goals. Uh, goal one, um, it's very similar from last year. It's our literacy initiative. And we are on target, um, is all of the benchmarks of the beginning of, that I set at the beginning of the year. Um, the second one is creating meaningful actionable goals. Um, and again, on that one, um, I've actually spent a lot more time with building principles this year than I have in the past. Um, so it's, I, I kind of feel that this year I've been a superintendent, but also much more of a hands-on mentor to, because although Mike and Serena have both been assistant principals, they've never been in the principal role and it's very, very different. So, um, I've done a lot more mentoring on day-to-day. Uh, we do talk about student data and growth and assessment, but more of my time that I anticipated has been spent on personnel matters and, um, which is great because that's what you want to do is to be as a support for your, um, new administrators. Um, but I have spent a lot more time than I had anticipated, um, with the administration. Um, again, as you all know, we are still updating our policy manual. Once we get, um, the policies back, we can start making the procedure book because we want them to align. Um, and I wasn't at the last meeting due to the illness. Um, did she say when we're going to be getting?
No, I asked her. She said there, she's gonna check on it. Uh, it was funny because Pam and I were talking about this at, at the subcommittee meeting. There, we're gonna, we're getting into a couple of the sections, but whatever the students or the, the teacher sections are, stuff like that, where we've got a number of the policies that we want to pull out and we've got to put them in procedures. But I am well, I suppose we don't, we, we can, we don't have to approve them until we say, what I'm worried about is there's some of these policies when, um, there's a complaint about a teacher, if there's a complaint about this. Right, so when we get into K, all of those need to go into the procedures book.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we see what that looks like before we go and jettison the policy.
So, so creating procedures beforehand.
Look, like you know what we want to be, you know what we're gonna want to do with these. I want to be able to see them and say, okay, look, before we vote this and adjust it to where you take all of those those, um, sections out there that, that's gonna do, that's gonna cause sort of an accounting of what's, what's happening. The, the alternative is, is that we're gonna put this in a procedure manual and we're gonna follow the procedures. Well, if we jettison and vote out the policy and the procedures aren't written yet, that's gonna cause a concern.
I'm thinking what's going to, my take on it
Yeah.
was what we would do, like with the curriculum complaint one or the complaint is that would become a procedure. I don't think we would edit it that much. There is a tweak I would make after speaking to some other superintendents on some of the policies.
Yeah.
When they put a committee together, they, um, do include a member of the school committee on it. Um, we don't have that in ours. Um, and it's best practice that if you're like transparency purposes, I really think we, I'll need to be like working together. Um, but I'll, I'll put together what, um, an exemplar from another school district. But I know, I know what you're saying. I do know what you're saying.
We can go through what we want to check and what we want to adjust and how we want to make, how we want to change it.
Mm-hmm.
But I, maybe what we'll do is when we get to K and we're gonna do that master sort of approval of all the policies and K, like, we're not gonna do these one by one. We're gonna do them chapter by chapter. When we get to the K section, if the procedures haven't caught up to where that is, then what we'll do is we'll pull out those two or three and we'll say, we're gonna hold these approvals until the procedures are up and running or that they're written so that we know that it's done so that we can get rid of the old policy.
I would just like to get started on it.
Yeah, no, me too.
Like, this is like my summer, I, like, I would like to have it done by, uh, September of next year.
Well, what I'm hearing Jen say is that really the procedures don't really need to get, entire procedures don't really need to get written. Basically, if we're taking policies and, and moving them from policy to procedure, then nothing really, little will change that is just being relocated and, and just refined a bit. And we can
Well, no, no, I, I know that, but we want to, but the challenge is is that we've run into instances, not recently, but in the last couple of years, where we weren't following the policies. And if we're gonna put them in procedures, I want to make sure that the procedures are written in a way that we know that they're gonna get followed. And if they're not gonna get followed, I'm not interested in getting rid of the policy that has some sort of hammer to it that we can actually make sure that it's followed through on unless it's gonna be followed through on a, on a procedure side.
Sure, but that's not our, you know, that's
Well, right now it's, right now it's a policy, so we do have oversight. I understand it wants to go into a procedure. But unless we've got the procedure written and, and some sort of assurances to how it's gonna be done, I, I'm really unwilling to, to change the policy.
So I have a question for you. Did you receive the recent policy newsletter from MAF?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe. I did. If I did, I haven't read it.
Okay, so in the, in, um, December's MAF bulletin, um, they with the policy newsletter um, of recent MAF policies that have been added or reviewed.
Yeah.
Um, so what I will do is I will take a picture of this and I will send it, um, to, to you. And we need to, some of these are policies we haven't gotten to yet.
Yeah.
But some of them are ones that we did early in the alphabet that we've already gone through. So I just want to make sure that the, any changes that we've made are consistent with the most recent ones that MAF has made.
Oh, that makes sense.
I want to know if I live, um, of, you know, and I'm sure Liz is on top of this policy newsletter, but I just want to make sure that we're aligned with, with this.
Well, yeah, there's no sense in us going through all these and then there's five that just got updated while we were going through the process.
Right, exactly. So this is just, this is something that we need to make sure that we look at at the next policy, uh, subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Which I think, when is that next one coming up, Erin, that we're, that Liz has come ended, twenty-third? Okay.
And so then the last one is taken on a life of its own this year. Um, so not only did I, um, join the rural school coalition, I just joined, um, the Connecticut. I'm on the executive committee for the Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable. Um, but I was just elected to be on their legislative committee, so I'll be representing, um, the Connecticut Valley Roundtable, um, which is
Connecticut Valley.
No, Connecticut Valley Superintendent. It's it's Connecticut Valley, but it's a little bit bigger. Um, it has Hampshire, Franklin and Hampden County in it.
Oh.
And they call it Connecticut?
Connecticut Superintendent, yeah, CBSR.
Why not call it Tennessee? I mean.
But Connecticut Valley. That's what we're called. Anyway, so I joined that as well. Um, since I drafted this, um, uh, we just found out on Friday afternoon as I was leaving, that, um, the governor did make, uh, her nine seat cuts and spared regional transportation and rural school aid. As you know, did send letters out, um, to the governor and to Ann Goby, um, to advocate for not touching regional transportation. Um, so we've also met with our three towns. We're going to be having another roundtable. And now that we know about this vocational tuition, um, again, something that I wasn't anticipating when writing my goals, um, it's kind of taken out of life. So this is, this has become a pretty big part of my job this year is navigating this and, um, navigating the two new principles and, um, trying to work through right now a budget for next year because our audit district costs, I can tell you already, are significantly higher than next year. So when you're talking to legislators and the houseways and means, we really, really need to advocate for rural school aid. It is extremely important. It is the only additional money we get besides the per people, um, expenditure and and the type of spending. It's gonna be like, it will say thirty-five thousand, but it'll look like seventy thousand because we base our budget off of the governors. And at the end, it was the sixty dollars per pupil versus the thirty dollars per pupil. So it'll look like we got a seventy thousand dollar increase, but we really didn't. It's only
I got you.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we really have to advocate. Last year, um, it was funded at fifteen million. Um, if they can keep it at fifteen million again, we can absorb those four special ed teachers and include them in rural school aid funding. And it meets the criteria because we're keeping kids in district, um, and it meets one of the criterias for rural school. So it's whoever you can talk to, the people, everybody, all legislators, we've got to keep rural school aid funded and it's just as important as, if not more important than the Student Opportunity Act. Like, I know some towns who have so much money that they're turfing fields with all their extra money that they have. Um, that would be a nice luxury to have. We're just trying to stab teachers.
Yeah.
So, um, I get the Student Opportunity Act. I hear that it's great. But when we're turfing fields and we're fighting, um, for special ed programs, I need to make sure that we're being taken care of at the state level. So, the governor's pretty adamant about taking care of us.
Well, that's nice to hear, considering the news this morning was that they're they're what, three hundred and some million dollars behind budget?
That's why she just made all those cuts, but didn't touch us.
They touched the town, they touched the rec sector.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's see, Mr. Carmel is not available this evening. He's a little under the weather. Um, so we don't have a Director of Finance and Operations report. Um, subcommittees, um, negotiations, we got one little item that we just need to throw out there. Um, we've got to make sure, I think we ran into an issue here last week where there was nobody from the school committee at the meeting. Um, Jen and I had a conversation. Anybody opposed to having me be an alternate member of the Subcommittee for Finance or for Negotiations? That way, if, if what we'll do is when we have upcoming meetings, um, Ted, Desiree and, and Russ are on that committee, Aaron's gonna get confirmation that at least somebody's gonna be there. Um, and then if there's one person gonna be off or two people that can't make it, Joe will reach out to me and see if I can, I can be there because we obviously can't have more than three. Um, and I want to make sure that you guys have an opportunity to go there, but we got to make sure that somebody's there because if they're not, we, we just, it's, it's kind of a wasted meeting. Um, anybody have any issues with that? I don't think we need to take a vote on it. I just, Ted, are you okay with that, since you're on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, perfect. Um, any updates? How are we doing on our negotiations?
Uh, we just sent clerical back an offer. We haven't heard and we have another meeting in January.
January thirty-first.
Oh, January thirty-first. That's, and then we just plan something for January thirty-third.
Well, maybe that's up there. What time is that meeting at?
Oh, but it's, it'll be perfect. We could go to negotiations and go right into that meeting.
Yes.
Three o'clock.
Three, two thirty.
Oh, perfect, okay.
That's perfect.
Well, then maybe, that, maybe that would be the day.
Yeah, that would be a great day.
Um, finance, we are probably due for another meeting here this month. Do we have a date?
Yeah, we do.
We've already got one locked in, right?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-four, okay. Yep, so we'll get another fun stuff like that. Um, LP back, I just signed a warrant for the corporation today. Um, you signed it?
Well, not for the corporation, but same warrant.
Oh, okay.
I don't have anything.
Neither. Uh, policy, we're gonna meet on the twenty-third. Um, buildings and grounds. We probably need to have, we need to find out from Mr. Ramado when he's coming back for an update. Um, I'll check with Joe on that one. Um, I L T, do you guys have anything?
Both have one.
With this upcoming Thursday, it's been rescheduled. Um, I can't make that one because my, a previous appointment from this week was rescheduled to that day. Um, so, um, Ryan, can you make Thursday?
I emailed Beth and said I could do it via Zoom, but I can't be in person.
Okay.
I can definitely listen. Who else is on there?
Uh, Desiree.
We should restart. I'm not going to be there. Pam's not gonna be there. You're struggling.
Who's gonna be there?
The teachers.
Oh.
And Beth.
Yeah, those three teachers. It's a teacher workshop anyway.
And principals.
All right, Jen said you're gonna check to make sure. It sounds like a lot of the key players are, are not gonna be there.
Right.
So we'll, we'll see.
Because originally it was supposed to be like the day of when I was supposed to be last. Like, well, it's gonna be like
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's supposed to be the PD day.
Right.
Oh.
And they're like, no, let's not have a meeting on the PD day.
All right, uh, wellness. Anything?
Yes.
Everybody's sick. Um, Sped?
We need to have, we need ASAP because, uh, Mr. Carmel and I met with Robin Dunn and started building the special ed budget for next year.
Not pretty is the understatement of the word.
Understatement of the word.
All right, so
Okay.
That's Pam, Brian and Erica.
Yeah.
Here, you'll set that up.
Get the date.
Okay. Um, technology. We had our little, uh,
Cause every kind of
Little workshop this, this, uh, for our meeting tonight. We all turn the iPads on and pull up SportsCenter, so other than that, we're in good shape. We're gonna work on folders. Um, okay, capital committee. Anything?
Nothing yet.
Is it working?
I told him this.
Russ, they begged to have you on this committee and have you on the capital committee thing, and they don't have any meeting.
Not yet. It's usually January, February, March.
Master plan. We haven't seen anything.
Uh, planning board.
Yeah.
Working on it tonight.
Yeah, um, athletics, we are what we probably do for a meeting here soon. Um, last one we had was at the end of fall season, so we'll probably, I'll, I'll reach out to Serena and Marion and set something up. Um, legislative liaison is not applicable right now. Um, what was comment? We still don't have anybody. Um, okay, old business, anything, anybody got anything for old business? Okay, new business. What Jen alluded to, um, earlier, we had a conversation, I had a conversation with Jen last week um, concerning the subject of out-of-district tuition. Um, I had a conversation with Russ last week about this same thing. Um, because in light of sort of the, the revelations that we've got here in the last month, um, we've got a law in the state of Massachusetts that indicates that towns should be paying for out-of-school, out-of-district tuition. Um, for our purposes, that would be any child that is not going to CTEC. It does not include, um, any special ed out-of-district sort of accommodations that is borne by the district. Um, but if we look at the amount of money that we are spending as a district for out-of-district tuition, is it in the area of about one million dollars a year, correct?
Is it the people going to Vogue School?
These are going to, yeah, Vogue, not CTEC, Westfield Tech, um, Smith Vogue, all that stuff.
But
So.
So that's a law, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a law. That's, that's the challenge about this. The law indicates that the towns are supposed to be paying for, bearing the cost of that. It is not something that the regional school districts are supposed to be bearing. Now, six, seven, eight years ago, when they redid the regional agreement, they brought, and they brought Grandville in, when we were on a conversation with Desi, um, we were informed that the, um, chairman of the school committee and the superintendent at that time um, were informed that it probably shouldn't be done this way and they indicated that they wanted to keep it. It probably shouldn't be done this way and they indicated that they wanted to keep it. Um I don't know why, doesn't really matter why. Um but basically.
The law that you're referring to was in the books already at the time.
That I don't know. Yeah, I think Jen is nodding her head yes. So and the Desi lady said, well, I questioned them and they said they wanted to keep it that way. I, I mean. I don't know, we could. It doesn't really, like I said, it doesn't really matter. What um? Well, when we talked to Desi. Um. Obviously, from fiduciary perspective, it certainly, we're not talking about twenty dollars here. It's a significant amount of money here for the, for the regional school district. Um in order, my understanding when talking with Russ. Is that in order for this to be able to be addressed from a regional school district perspective? If we wanted to adjust it. To. Follow the law. Uh we would need to open up the regional school agreement, which obviously would require a warrant. Go to the three towns requesting that the, the um regional school agreement be opened up. Um we've had some sort of preliminary kind of, I, at the roundtable meeting. I wasn't able to touch base with a couple of the um. Of the uh selectmen. Um I think there's a lot of. Sort of uh openness to try to make this as. I guess as painless as possible, obviously to, we're basically dealing with. What a three hundred thousand dollar. Movement of funds. From where they're being paid right now to where they, where they would need to get paid. Following that state law. Um I think there's a lot of openness to sort of. Gradually doing that, whether it's like a five-year sort of phased-in plan. Um but in order for us to even get to that. Um I think it's a good idea if we have a roundtable meeting inviting the select men and select, select people from the towns. Us. Russ will be there, Jen will be there so that we can at least have an open conversation. Lay it out on the table, what's the situation that we're in? Maybe come up with some solutions because we're gonna need. Everybody's sort of participation in this to sort of make this. Somewhat fair and and obviously follow the law. Um. And when I talked to Russ, he thought that was a good idea. So right now, what we're looking at is. Um we thought sooner the better. We've got an option of January thirty first or February first. At five thirty here in the library or something like that, probably. Um. So. Those were the dates that Russ was available because we obviously wanna, we, we need to make sure that Russ is here. Um.
Wouldn't you say February thirty first?
Sorry, January thirty first or February first. So it's a Wednesday or Thursday. Um what do we just say? There's gonna be a negotiations meeting on the thirty first at two or something. So if we wanna try to. It, it, is there a date? I mean, we can kinda. Send it out to all the select people and say, look, we're looking at doing this on January thirty first at five thirty. Um. Like everybody to be in attendance. It's not. Mandatory, obviously. I'm hoping that there's at least one representative from. Each town that's gonna be able to be in attendance. I'm hoping that we'll get more than that. Um. Is there a day? Is anybody opposed to the thirty first? Ted, does that?
Yes, I am on schedule the thirty first and I very much want to be there. Um so my vote would be for February, what was it?
February first, the next day, Thursday.
Yeah, I can do February first. I cannot do um.
You can't do thirty, okay. Has anybody got a problem with the first? You good?
Russ good.
Okay, alright, so Aaron, why don't we send it out? Um and say that we would like to have around their presences requested um for a roundtable meeting to discuss. The uh concern about out of district tuition. Um and we're gonna have it at five thirty in the library and we would hope that they could. All come. And do we wanna invite members of the um? Finance Committee for the towns or no?
Don't think so because it's just. I would don't know this. My thoughts, Pam, is this is just about our regional agreement.
Okay, okay, yes, except it's about, but it very much affects the finances of the town.
It does.
So we do.
Well, this, Pam, this, the other thing to remember, this is a first meeting. I, I would think we're gonna have to have follow-up meetings.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's just.
Are you, are you hearing this? And Ted, are you available on February first?
Well, how did we lose Ted?
We lost him a lot.
Heard him.
We lost Ted.
Heard him go out.
We'll, we'll check back with Ted. We'll find that out.
I'm not opposed of income. I just, I don't wanna muddy the waters between the opening of changing the regional agreement. And. Which is.
Sure, no, I.
See what I'm saying?
I do, I understand it and I do think that VinCon needs to be involved, but if, i- if you don't think in the very first one. Um then um that's understandable. I just want to make sure that.
Well, it's A, it's an open meeting, so. Anybody can show up.
I would say that you're, you're gonna be discussing the regional agreement. You're discussing a legal issue.
Yeah.
In, in the. Legal counsel is gonna be there to inform the three communities.
Right.
So I mean. I mean, obviously, it's gonna require several meetings.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, just so everybody understands from a, and if I, I'm gonna try to get this right. First step with this is that from a procedural step, we as a school committee. Will after this. Roundtable, we wanna give everybody sort of the information as to what's going on. We're gonna obviously have to put it as a point of conversation on our, on our meeting right after that roundtable meeting. We're gonna need to take a vote as to whether we wanna open up the regional agreement and send warrants to the towns requesting that. That's step one. Once that's done. Then it's really on hold until May, where the town meetings where they will vote on this. Um.
And then the town meetings, they vote whether or not they want to open the regional agreement.
You got it, yep. So um and what I'm hoping is that by starting this conversation early. That we can get some consensus between the towns and the selectmen and, and hopefully the, the finance subcommittees and. And kinda get everybody on the same page where we can come up with a. Palpable sort of solution. Um that we can take to the towns and be able to say, look, we've already met. This is what we've all agreed that it would be in the best interest. And this is what we're recommending. Um. I don't know. Obviously, it's gonna either, everybody's gonna vote to open it. Um or we're gonna have one or two towns maybe say no. Um I don't know what happens if that happens. Um because now you're gonna be stuck in a situation where we've got a law that we. Now know we're not following. Um and a regional agreement that in order to adjust it, we need to open it. And if we don't open it. I don't know from a legal perspective how that works. Um so that's why we've got Russ.
Then we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find, hopefully we don't get to that point. Um but this is sort of the first step.
Could you eat, could either of you um at some point in time just direct me to where I can find that law so that I can read that law?
I can tell you right now. Give me one second.
Yeah, you can go grab that. Um.
Okay.
So and then once. Yeah, so.
Certification.
Yeah.
Um so I just wanna make sure I have the numbers right. I think that you mentioned that as of right now, about one million dollars of our budget is spent. Um with. Out of district vocational tuition, is that correct?
That is my understanding. It's, it's not exactly a million, but it's right around that number. That, that's a good ballpark.
And did you say that approximately three hundred thousand of that one million is from, sending from towns other than Southwick?
No, well, no, what I'm saying is that there would be a three hundred thousand dollars shift. Cause basically right now. Um. Granville and Southwick pretty much send almost equal number of kids to the out of district. And Tallinn has one, and Tallinn has one child. Going out of district. So the way that the regional agreement breaks that, that. Expenses up right now is that Southwick is bearing eighty-three percent of the, of that one million. Granville's picking up thirteen percent of that and Tallinn's picking up um four percent. Um so if you switch that to actual, like looking at the number of kids and the financial responsibility that each town would bear. There's gonna be about a three hundred thousand dollar shift. From Southwick and Tallinn. Over to Granville to fuck, to basically break that down the way the kids are set up. Now. Like I said, to try to. Expect the town to, to absorb that kind of adjustment all at once, I think is unfair and I don't think anybody's looking to try to do that. Um so I mean, if you, if we did it something where it was like a twenty percent sort of graduated increase over five years. Then that way the towns have time to readjust and, you know, in five years from now, the numbers may be. In a better situ, I mean, this is all, this is gonna change every year as to where those numbers are.
I just have a question. So out of the million, the Southwick is still going to be paying for all of the kids that go to C Tech?
No, no, no. Well, everybody does. Everybody pays for out of C Tech and it's broken down the way that the regional agreement is.
Right, but it's just the three hundred thousand is specifically for our kids.
It's the out of district kids, okay?
Really.
Right.
This right now.
Most C Tech at all is in the one million dollars.
But that's just an example.
This current year.
That's it here.
Next year could be a different.
Next year could be different. Ten years from now, you could find out that Southwick's got eighty-five kids and Granville has twelve.
Right. I mean, so it's not gonna affect that this year.
No, 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 no. And, and just so that everybody understands. This is not a thing that we can switch tomorrow. If everything goes, if everything goes according to plan. It goes to the town to vote on to open up the regional agreement in May. That allows us to, to adjust the language. Russ is gonna have a suggested language adjustment to allow us. To reappropriate this. Then it's gotta go, and this one I didn't talk to Russ about, I'm assuming it's gotta go. Back to the towns or go back to somebody to vote to reapprove the regional agreement the way it's set up. That would be something where we'd probably be looking for a special town meeting to be able to do that because you wouldn't wanna wait another following year. Because already, if we open it up and fix it next year, it won't take effect until fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Because this May, they're gonna be voting on. School, the school budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So this year is not touched. Next year, there's gonna be no difference. It's gonna be, the soonest that we can address this would be the year after. So fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
So going back to um Erica's question, can I? February first or whenever we have our first meeting.
Yeah.
Um and would be if we could have approximate figures um in per pupil cost. Of what um it costs to send students to C Tech versus each of the other out of district schools that um that this. Applies to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Already, Pam, I can give it to you. I can just tell you that C Tech is about fifteen thousand and that's covered by the school district. Because there's still um by law.
It's considered a district.
Yeah, it's a district because they go to our school.
Yeah.
By law, um actually, WTA is a little over twenty thousand and uh Smith is a little over twenty thousand as well. And by.
WTA and Smith are the only two right now out of district that um this scenario is applying to, correct?
Yes. And it, it falls under Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-four, Section seven C.
MGL, uh Chapter seventy-four, Section C.
Seven C.
Seven C, okay, thank you.
And just so you know, um I have asked, we are the only school district in Massachusetts that pays for out of district vocational tuitions in the school budget.
That's interesting.
Wow, okay.
The other ones what the town.
The towns just pay.
Towns pay.
And towns pay the transportation as well.
Okay, well, that's another piece. And if, do you have um.
Oh, I don't have that.
I do.
If you don't have that right now, that's okay, but if we could have that for February first, that would be great.
I already have it. It's about sixty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Total?
Yeah. Uh vocational transportation.
What happens if the kids go to school of choice?
School choice is not included in this.
It's not.
No, because they're technically going to a different district, right? And we already pay a fee.
Different, school choice is completely different than Chapter seventy-four vocational.
So. I just wanted to bring that up to everybody. This is obviously gonna be a challenging sort of. Situation that we're gonna have to work through. Um but. I think the best way through it is to be completely transparent. We get everybody at the table. Sure, we can figure a way through this. Um we're gonna need to. Juggle some votes and get some stuff done, but um. Like i- i- the situation we're at right now is gonna probably be something that'll look very different ten years from now and. It may have looked very different ten years ago. Uh which is maybe why they didn't.
How long has it been set up where the school is paying for this?
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Is that with Granville?
That's Granville, yeah.
Yeah, so it's been doing, we've been doing this last while.
Yeah, I'm gonna sign it.
All right.
But. But I need to say that the way it is written, it looks like. It's referring to school choice. Does not look like it's referring to Chapter seventy-four. Just so you know, when you read it and I'm in education. It didn't, it looked like it's.
What is written?
The regional agreement.
The, the racial agreement is written or the way the.
No, the way the law is written is very clear. So if I was to read. What it says under that section in the regional agreement. I think it would be referring to school choice. I would never in a million years have interpreted that line. To include Chapter seventy vocational.
All right, so if that's, so if that's the case then. If maybe we oughta get. It, is it worth getting some legal, some legal sort of advice on this because?
That's, that's why you're gonna have Russ.
That's why we have Russ.
Yeah, because.
Clarify, it's Russell Dupre.
Yes, we're talking about. It's not Russ Fox. Russ Fox stated, you know, Holiday Inn Express last night and he was a lawyer. No, this is Russell Dupierre that, that uh, that we've been in contact with. Um. If. If in fact that is referring to school choice and not this. Then the argument could be made that the regional agreement is silent on this. And if it's silent on it, you don't need to open it up. To do it, you just need to do a notification and say, look, we've identified something that was missed or over, it was overlooked or. Or whatever reason. Wasn't appropriated correctly twelve years ago.
And just to let you know, I am aware of another school district where they um, they only had one or two students who went out of district. So the school was just incorporating it into their budget. Um it's becoming greater.
Yeah.
So um they went back, they looked at their regional period and it specifically says that it's to be paid for by, because it's two towns.
Yeah.
So. It's, it's, even though it was past practice, it was specified clearly in their regional agreement, so you can go back to it. The problem is ours is a little vague and so they're relying on past practice. But when I read it and I've read it again and I've read it again, I think if you look at that regional agreement as a whole. If you look at where it talks about vocational tuition, it says that we're going to establish our own. And then when it says the other one, it says students who attend any public school as of October first. That's school choice. Because Chapter seventy-four is different for the school choice.
Think that you're gonna have a hard time making that case because it is truly vague in any public school, WTA and Smith Volk would fall under that category.
Right, but there's, but there is another vocational section in the regional agreement. That, I'm not an attorney. I'm just saying.
I agree, but I still think, I, I, I don't think that's the tree that we should spark up. I don't, I think that we've done a really, really good job moving. Really bad blood um amongst towns. I think that we've passed that. I think that we've established ourselves as a very respectable, transparent school district. I think that we have earned some, some hard-earned uh respect and I wouldn't wanna do anything to jeopardize that.
Yeah, and me either, Pam, and I think if, if, if everybody, even if we go down a road that, let's say we're, we're gonna get. Let's say we take this to the towns and we don't need to, but we do anyway. When we open up the regional agreement and we fix it. Great. It, literally, it's gonna delay it a year. And in the big scheme of things, that's not. That's not the end of the world. So I, I'm with you. I mean, it's. Hopefully, if everybody, like I said, at, at that roundtable meeting, if. Hopefully, if everybody, like I said, at, at that roundtable meeting, if everybody comes going, all right, look. So the law says, this is what we're gonna figure out, how do we get from A to B without anybody getting crazy, and how do we figure this out? And if we can get through that, then. We might be able to, we might be able to just. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be easy, but we might be able to get through this and use some of that. Earned respect and transparency and show everybody that we're doing this the right way. And, and then we can. Get through this and move on, so. But anyway, so we will try to get this set up for February first. Uh, this will certainly be a topic that we will be discussing shortly thereafter. Um, we'll make sure that we have the numbers and all those things available for the meeting, and. Ideally, Pam, what we'll do is we'll get those out to the, to, um, the, the people that are coming before the meeting. Um, so they, so they've got a chance to see them.
Copy of the law, copy of the, um, you know, the tuitions and the finances, probably, and a copy of the, the regional agreement and the sections that apply. All of those things, yeah, out in advance.
Yep. Yeah, we should.
You have to be transparent.
Yeah, we, well, I mean.
Always.
So we would, we, we wouldn't be having the meeting if we didn't wanna be transparent, I mean, it's. Yeah, that's, that's the only way I wanna do this, so. Okay, anyone got any questions, other comments on this? All right, perfect. Well, Pam, your record still stands.
Uh, new business?
Yeah, that's his new business, we have any more new business?
Good, I just wanted to plant a seed.
Yes, sir.
Public relations.
Yeah.
I've had different people, you know, come up to me, know what's going on at the school, what's good. They don't know. They don't know. Uh. And some of the, uh. News media. Spoke to them about what, what are they doing with other schools, things like that. And they said they'd be willing to. To work with us to, uh, promote different programs going on in the school, anything new. A play, uh, you know, any, and. Helping out seniors, that'd be great, I'd love to see that on the front page of the newspaper. You know, and, and transparency, but it's also letting people know what's going on, you know, cause this is a big part of the budget.
So I would tell people to get on and join our Facebook page. Because our Facebook page will really keep you up to date almost daily about what's happening in our schools. And it had a big article, um, about the seniors helping seniors, it tells about the plays, it talked about. The kids enjoying recess, every day there's usually something about what's happening.
Who's in charge of updating that Facebook page?
Erin does.
Okay, so if we. If we do that, if we're doing that anyway, is there any reason we can't take what we put on that Facebook page and send out like a. Press release or whatever to. To Westfield News, just so that they got it, and at least kinda remind them that we've, we've uploaded this and this.
That'd be a great idea.
I mean, if we're already doing it.
Then they could follow up if they want more information.
And then Ross, to your point, you know, when people ask you, hey, you know, like, how do I, how do I know what's going on in schools, especially if you don't have children in the school? I think that all of us, our general default should be, hey, check out the, check out the, out the Facebook pages, you know, daily updates, and it, and it's a lot of great news.
Well, maybe we just do a story on the Facebook page. You know. And you get that on the front page, you know.
All right, well, that's certainly a point well taken, so I think we'll.
Again, I'm just planting the seeds.
It's usually, it's got. You know what, it's all good stuff. All right, anybody got, anything else for new business? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
Oh, second.
All right, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Pam?
Yes.
Brian?[1789.48]